Oh, okay.
Mason, you know?
We got seven fifteen.
Okay, it's seven fifteen. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals Thursday, October sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. We're in the Littleton town offices, room one oh three thirty seven Shattuck Street, Littleton. I'll call the meeting to order. So, my first order of business under administrative matters is minutes, and Shelley said we don't have any minutes this week to review. We got pretty caught up last meeting. And accounts payable? I didn't see any accounts payable either, so that's good news. One thing I wanted to ask, since we are televised and since it's a new dawning, some of the other boards pledge allegiance to the flag as they're opening to the meeting. Does anybody have any thoughts on whether this board might or should or wants to do that?
Personally, I did not see that done in any zoning or planning board meeting because it's a public hearing and it's not a meeting of the general.
Planning board does it.
Is it related to being televised?
I don't know. It's not related to being televised necessarily. It's related to passion I'm feeling this year. You would say no?
Which is a lot.
Can you say no?
That's my opinion, but...
I don't care. We may raise it again at another date. We may get feedback, just having said it on the air, maybe we'll get some feedback.
I have no objection.
Anyone else?
No objection.
No objection? Anyone else want to weigh in?
If, if, if you, if we have time for this, I just want to make a little comment about the Littleton housing production plan.
Oh, please.
Which there is a draft that's been issued, and did you get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, so, and you have one, and you and wants it, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's piled up online.
Yeah.
Is it online?
And it's online, yeah.
I'd also like to say publicly that the lottery is open for the Omni forty B for sale and for rent units, and I have not been able easily to get an application, but they can be had by contacting the administrative secretary here. Then there's a phone number, you can go on the website, there's a phone number to call to get a lottery package mailed to you. And there is going to be an informational hearing at the pooper room of the Littleton Library, and I think it was Saturday, October twenty-fifth, at two P M.
And while we're talking about the Omni, I ran into Leslie French, and she mentioned that they, they have aerial photography every few weeks of the site, and it's posted on their website. I don't know if it's a special Fifteen Grade Road website, or if it's in the Omni website, but...
I could probably ask her if we could have a link to it.
Yeah.
Please.
The Wildflower Meadows lottery information is all on the Fifteen Grade Road page.
Of?
Of the Littleton.
Of their website?
Of our one.
Of the Littleton website.
Oh, your website, okay. Yeah, maybe we could get a link to the aerial photography, you know?
But I was told the materials to apply are not there. They have to be mailed to people.
Could you possibly print out one for us? And I'll come by and pick it up in your office?
This whole pile of them on the floor?
I had one mailed to the, to one applicant recently.
Okay.
Okay. The next thing I want to talk about is the applications. We did a very good job, I think, of trying to make these applications more consistent with other communities and consistent with what other of our boards are using for applications. But when I was trying to sort through the materials for this meeting, I had a couple of comments that are confusing to me, and I think Bill's had a couple for a while, too. So, first of all, in the front page, we have the petitioner's address, and we have the property owner's address, but we don't have the address of the property we're talking about. So, that needs to be more prominently displayed somewhere.
If I could make a suggestion, I mean, that should be the very first thing, and, you know, there are three, three parts to this. It can be three different parties, it can be all the same. It should be the property in question, then the petitioner, then the property owner.
Yeah.
No, and that was suggested way back when, but we're trying to simplify to get everything on one page, and somehow that, that get eliminated. Any error on the site, whatever?
Well, we have a blank one here. I'm just going to put property, colon, and then I think you can squeeze the space in a little bit so that it still fits on that.
Yeah, but, you know, it's like down the bottom, we have the process map parcel and everything else. That should be tied in with a property address and all together in the same squad. So, I think that should move up, and the petitioner and the property owner should move down. I can show you a form from another town that has worked very well for many years, and...
That's fine. She can, she can do it. She can just move things around. The deed reference book and page should probably be with the assessment app and press on number two, so the decision writer isn't looking all around the applications, so the heading section needs to be put in. I'm just going to pen this one up and hand it back to you. And then the other thing I didn't like is, on the page two, where it says what they're applying for, people have been a little better about putting the chapter, the section of the bylaw that they're referencing, but there's no description of what it is. So, you have to go from there, and then you have to paw through the application, seeing if they even bothered to include in the narrative what it is they're asking for. So, I'll, I, I might point out on one of them tonight, I'm not really sure, wasn't really sure what they were looking for when I went to view the property.
You didn't, you didn't give me the paperwork that you picked up, did you? And I didn't bring it. You don't have extra copies, do you? You didn't let me peer over your shoulder.
Sure. Leading to the view just that, no, out of the instructions, right away it says here the information needs to be submitted. And even in the sections on the second page, it says, you're going to give a statement in regards to what it is you're asking for, and how do you meet all the criteria for it, whether it's a special permit or a variance.
No, it says that, but people don't read anymore. Why do you think people read? No one's got time to read.
Well, I...
Unless you text it and you use acronyms, they'll read it.
But the other thing is, it says, no, any complete information may cause a delay on the hearing, and, you know.
We never do it.
Then we need to go back and...
So, what I want to suggest is that there'd be a line inserted here that says, brief description.
I don't have the outside of Eight Blood Road. I guess I've learned a lesson.
Okay. Do you have another comment on that?
Eight Blood Road may not have an outside, because we have it last meeting.
We're still talking about these right now. Okay? We're not open on Eight Blood Road yet. When we open, you can ask.
No, I was asking Shelley a question about paperwork, not a question about the...
I'm sorry, but we're talking about revising the application right now. Just wait a minute. Brief description here, and then, anybody have any other comments that they noticed You have any? Okay. For now, that's some modifications to the application. Okay. Now, we may ask a question.
Shelley, does Eight Blood Road have a new outside, an application? Or did you not know? Because it was last week. Last week. Okay. I just couldn't find it, so I didn't know if it was or not. Thank you.
There's a letter, the, the, all the supplemental information is emailed on Friday, the letter from the attorney, the new plans.
Okay, I got that. Thank you. Okay, we're not open on Eight Blood Road yet. Anybody else have any administrative matters to discuss?
Do you have everything? Patrick, the material we picked up last week when we drove by the, the properties, you didn't get again, and I didn't bring mine with me, so you might need to look over Mark's shoulder on Grist Mill and Dogwood and Goldsmith, because I, because I didn't bring it.
Okay. Where's Rod's stuff? Oh, I thought I picked up mine.
Oh, Rod's not here. He can pass that down to Sherri.
Why don't you give it to Patrick? That way he has it. Patrick and I picked up the materials last week and went and drove by all the properties and talked about them.
Although Rod could come in late, still. You don't want me peering, do you? I have two loose plans. Were they attached to Rowan's plans, do you think?
The top one just came in today, that's the stamped plot line for Eight Blood Road.
Okay.
And then those, um...
That's a septic system.
That's in the Hill Creek Street one.
Fine.
This is something I've been...
Thank you. Okay, let's see what we have from any last meetings that we haven't caught up on. Oh, one thing that went around by email, I think, were decision drafts, samples from Phil Farnsworth. Has anybody had a chance to look at them, use them, or work with them? Any comments to them?
Downloaded them and put them in the file.
So, it would be good for you to have them, so if somebody has a decision to write and they ask you how to do it, you can send them that template. Anything else? We can take a breather for three minutes, then, until the appointed time for the continued hearing of Eight Blood Road.
Would anyone like a glass of water?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. A glass of water here?
Yes, yes, please.
Um... Oh, that was Shelley gave it to me. I was going to ask you another question about, oh, I know, about the minutes. I had a thought, I don't know if it's worth trying. It seems like when we get the minutes, they stack up because we run out of time to review them, and it often feels to me like Bill is doing all the work reviewing the minutes. Would the board be agreeable to, we'll take turns being the minute reviewer for the next meeting? So, it would force whoever's turn it is to read them completely and make edits to them. Not to say that Bill and others can't also review them, but at least that way it'll kind of force everybody to take a minute and review the minutes. What do you think? Is that all right?
You might be disappointed in my review.
No.
So, you're going to have big crunch typing, though.
They're trying to type in. I think, I think we should give the applicant the responsibility of typing the decision.
So, you're proposing that?
We just take turns on minute review. Like, the next set of minutes that comes in, we'll start at one end of the table or the other and say, you're the primary reviewer. Everybody else can still review.
Or we could, you either get to write a decision or review.
Or review minutes, that's fair. Yeah, and we'll take turns, we'll just...
I'll review minutes.
We'll just go in order. All right, am I close enough to seven thirty?
If you're at seven thirty somewhere.
Okay, the time is seven thirty. We're calling case number eight, excuse me, wrong one, seven thirty. We're calling the continued hearing of Eight Blood Road, the case of Joyce, Joseph Royal, for special permit from section one seventy-three ten B one, for a proposed addition at Eight Blood Road, case number eight thirty-nine A. I see Mr. Royal is here with counsel, and we have a amended package that was submitted for this hearing. Attorney Kate, and I'll tell you, the procedure here is that you come forward with your client. You can sit formally or informally, introduce yourselves, state your case, and when you are done, the board will ask questions. You'll have a chance to reply to the questions. When that's done, we'll ask if, we'll read any letters we received, building inspector comments, we'll ask the abutters if they have anything to say, and then back to you again. And this board is fairly informal, but keep some decorum. Thank you.
I'm Michael Kate, representing the petitioner, Joe Royal, and his wife, actually. He's not here tonight. I want to just start by saying I appreciate the help the board has given my client before I was involved, which just was as of last week. And I also apologize in our haste to get a document before the board last week. I was, with some typos. I made few pages, pages three. There's only one real substantive issue in that, in that change I'd like to point out, is that on page three, the power of three B, here we are explaining about having to go over the septic system. If the garage, if a garage was hypothetically located in the front of the house, it says down towards the, the end of the second paragraph here, turnarounds by vehicles would be possible without driving over the septic system. That should be, would not. That's the only substantive typo. There's some others, if the board want, I made copies of the few minor typos after changes if you want. Give me.
Why don't you go through it?
Okay.
You know, what I'm going to suggest is, why don't you go through it with a narrative, and why don't you give a copy of the corrected one to the administrative assistant to put in?
Basically, I have to, I appreciate the board's assistance to my client relative to the fact that this started off being a special permit, where it's really permitted to be a variance proceeding instead. As we pointed out in this narrative here, the notice that went out in the paper said special permits against variance, so I don't believe we have an issue with the propriety of the proceedings now being amended to a variance. So, in the first page, I just set out the current non-conforming with zoning, this is a non-conforming, illegal non-conforming lot at this point, that's short on some, on some lot area as well as frontage. We actually now comply with sideline setbacks, the current sideline setbacks of thirty feet on one side and seventeen feet on the other, and the proposal is to put a garage on the property. The garage has been designed to be a narrow one where the cars sit in tandem, front to back, and the board suggested making this a fourteen-foot wide garage, which is the standard. To make it fourteen feet inside, the structure itself has to be fifteen feet wide, as is made out on the narrative here, and on the plan submitted after the narrative was provided to. It is, it leaves only a four-foot distance between the boundary line, I believe it's the northeast, with property now a form of the Matheson. Should be also pointed out, there is a bump out with the chimney, by the chimney, that that's actually the nearest current point to the sideline boundary, and that leaves interior, interior at less than fourteen feet, it's only twelve feet inside the garage, based on the current plan. Now, this is a very narrow lot, it's budded by very large lots on either side, and they're both forested, they're former seasonal camps, they're no longer used as such across the street. I don't know the size of the lot, but it's forest and farmland across the street, so there's virtually no one in the direct vicinity of this property, so that anything we did in terms of the variance here doesn't create a density issue in that neighborhood, because it's not really a well-populated neighborhood in that particular position. The lot being narrow and the soil conditions create a very tight space with the septic system. Right now, there is a turnaround in existence, and that would basically be gone if we were to be, if we put the garage in the other space, and is almost possible, which is in the front of the house. That would also detract from not being able to see the house from the road, also makes it very difficult to avoid going over some parts of the septic system to turn around, giving out of the garage of that sort. And if I was, I was projecting out a little bit where this would be situated, to avoid the septic system, and also be able to allow access to a garage, and it would, I think that, I firmly believe, I should say, that such a garage would still require to be within ten feet of the sidelines, so that would need a variance anyway. So, no matter we put a garage in this property, no matter what we do, it would need a variance from the fifteen-foot sideline setback. So, I think the board agreed last week that a garage in this environment is a necessity, so there is a hardship involved here if you're not to be a garage permitted on this property. I think we made out in this amended application that this garage can't go anyplace else except on that side, primarily because of the septic system, which that could not go anyplace else in this property. You can't go in the back there to the lake, there's only so much room in the front of the house, so that's the shape of it, the topography would permit a garage, prohibit a garage in the back, plus the fact that the garage were in the back of the house with the garage, with the driveway going past the house on the right-hand side, there would be flood insured requirement there, too. So, we have the hardship, we have the shape and topography of the land and the soil conditions, all mitigating any reasonable reason to forego allowing a variance on this, on this situation. So, as far as I make out pursuant to statute of bylaw, the plan that we have here, and the necessity for a garage in this situation, we do have all the grounds for a variance in place.
Yes.
Your drawing shows seventeen feet. You keep talking about fifteen feet, which is it?
Okay, well, seventeen feet currently from the bump out of the, of the chimney. So, that's the closest point of the house to the sideline. The projection of the garage is fifteen feet wide from the house.
Oh, I see. You're saying the property, closeness to the property line is seventeen feet.
At the current time, and we're, we're talking about if we put fifteen foot, and that's on the exterior, so it makes it fourteen feet in the interior. So, with a fifteen-foot structure, we're within fourteen feet of the lot.
And I would offer a correction. This board never said that a garage is a necessity. We don't, garages are nice to have in New England. We did not say that they're a necessity.
With all due respect, when I was watching the film, it said this...
I said, all God's children should have a garage. However, there are lots of houses in Littleton in this vicinity who do not have garages.
Okay, I apologize for my misparaphrasing.
That's all right.
What is a bioclear?
That is, if I'm not mistaken, it's one of the vents, it's a special kind of vent for this kind of septic system? Am I correct about that?
Candy cane.
No, it's actually, it sort of filters the sludge, it sort of rinses the sludge, and then reathers the...
So, it's like a septic tank, or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It's like an additional closing mechanism.
It is above ground, though.
It is above ground, yeah.
Is that, is that a component of an IA septic system? Is it an alternative septic system to conventional? So, it's a kind of, because of groundwater, and I think they have nitrogen loading over in this area, too, so that's the kind of septic system he was required, they were required to put in that home, as I recall, because...
It's very close to the lake.
It's close to the lake, and they have to make sure that nothing gets into the lake, and it works well.
And I also want to clarify, so, the previous plan from last meeting was an eighteen-foot wide addition.
That's correct.
And now it's fifteen feet? Because after the plot plan, you didn't have as much room as you thought?
Exactly.
Okay. So, I'd like to point out to the board about requiring a plot plan.
I noticed that when it was resubmitted, and I defer to you.
Is that like an I told you so?
Yes.
No, we, we, we try to work with anyone who comes before us, but in situations like these, it's, you know, the building commissioner would have required it.
That's why we asked you to continue and go back, though, on this one, because it was so close. You're now proposing that the sideline setback at the worst point be reduced from fifteen feet to four feet?
The four feet is correct.
Seventeen feet currently.
Well, fifteen feet is our bylaw.
From seventeen feet.
No, from fifteen feet, that's the variance you're requesting. Our bylaw allows fifteen feet. Okay. You had comments, Bill?
Well, I don't know if it's been clear, but the lot is non-conforming because it's undersized, the frontage is non-conforming. Other than that, the house where it's located is conforming to all the setbacks.
The sideline setback.
Yeah, if there was anything being done that did not create a new non-conformity, it would be a special permit. In this case, they're adding on an addition that creates a new non-conformity. Based on the conversations from the last hearing and everything else, I think it's much clearer because we had the plot plan with all the dimensions accurate on him. And it's also noted that the size of the garage was reduced in size from eighteen feet wide to fifteen feet wide, which gets you that four-foot space with the edge of the building if built to the property line before one feet, so that, that's an improvement.
Over the last week's submission.
Yep.
Last month's.
Last month's, sorry.
Yeah, over the initial submission.
The back corner of the proposed garage is very much into a hillock, a small hill. Are you, that projects off of your property onto the neighbor's property. Are you planning to put that corner of the garage underground, basically?
Uh, no, I don't think so, and I haven't really thought that far ahead.
Could I ask a different way? When I went there today, there was a stake with a pink ribbon on the top. What does that stake denote? The property line or the edge of garage?
I don't think either. I think that was the site he used to look at the other building.
Oh, okay, so that wasn't any...
I don't think that that's the...
So, one of the things that's of concern to, I think, Ms. Cowley and myself when I looked at it today, is that it appeared that a fifteen-foot wide structure would be so close to the lot line, which then has at that back corner a very noticeable hill or grade change. So, the only way to construct it would be to impact the grade change at that back corner. You know what I'm talking about? And the concern is that that might not be your property. I don't know where your property line is, but whether or not the owner of that property is an absentee seasonal owner or a landowner who never comes, you just can't go on his property to construct this thing. And I'm not convinced that if you take away a grade change on your own line, you're going to leave him with, what do they call it in the law, when it, it'll collapse? Because if that's your property and you take it away, it's going to, it's the support, there's no support mechanism. If it's his property, you can't do it. You can't take his grade away. And I don't think you can put your garage foundation right up against dirt.
Well, you could if it's concrete.
Well, you can raise the foundation.
He can, he can have that corner of the ground.
But there's, there's an issue with excavation, whether, you know, whether it encroaches on the other property during excavation or whatever.
So, so my, my thought would be, if the board is inclined to, to talk about this granted relief, that you're going to need to get permission of your abutter to do whatever you need to do there.
So, Herb Matheson is, fairly owns the abutting property, and he lives two lots down. And when I first... And when I first spoke to him about this, we walked the site where the garage was going to be, and this was, again, originally going to be eighteen feet. You know, and I stepped out eighteen feet with him and showed him where it was going to be, and he's like, "I don't have a problem with this." And I think that he would work with me if there was an issue of-
No, this would have required a building permit. And under the building permit process, the building codes and the building inspector will be looking at. There are protections for the abutting property. You cannot discharge excessive water onto the property that is currently there. You cannot slope, etc., goes on the abutting property, et cetera, et cetera. So there are protections under the state building code and the code enforcement by the building inspector.
But we've often worried about a setback that's so small that you practically can't get around it to paint and maintain it.
Especially with that hill there.
Yeah, that's fair to be worried about that.
I'd love to grant these kinds of-
That's why I noted that, you know, it did go from one, that was a comment last month, and now it's increased to four feet. You know, to me, that's absolute minimum. I know in the past, we talked about sheds being three feet, but I think four feet is absolute minimum, or it could be a little bit more, so, but there's limitations.
There's going to be a lot more engineering done here because there's conservation commissions. This is with a hundred-foot buffer, so there's going to be a lot more engineering in terms of drainage and runoff. There's going to have to be compliance with that.
It may have to be again.
Could you, do you think it'd be possible to get a written note from the Mathesons?
I think, yeah.
That's not, that's not, that's not for here. That's not for here.
If you're from the building inspector.
That's for the building inspector, that's for the neighbors, that's for the attorney to worry about.
No, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. What I, to me, the concern about invasion of the neighbor's property is always something we've watched out for. And by getting a letter saying that the neighbor is on board with allowing him to come on the property to build such a thing, wouldn't, isn't that appropriate for us to ask that kind of question?
The neighbors and abutter who got their notice in two fashions, by the publication notice and by the mail directly, if the abutter wanted to be here to protest it. There's plenty of ways to be here to protest it. We do not invite-
I'm just worried about this.
We do not invite the abutters specifically to come in. They've gotten the same notice as everyone else. I want to read what the building inspector has written to this board. I think it's a repeat of last month's.
I don't have it.
Eight Blood Road. "Applicant is seeking a special permit pursuant to the Littleton zoning bylaws, Section 173 10B1, to allow encroachment into the required side yard setback with an attached two-story addition. Although the lot is legally pre-existing non-conforming, the structure is conforming as it meets all current required setbacks. The addition to the right side of the structure is creating a new non-conformity. I believe the applicant should be requesting a variance. No further comment." And that was addressed by Mr. Katon in the narrative when he started. I'd like to ask if there's any abutters in the room or anybody interested in this application that would like to speak? Wait one minute for the late arrival. Anybody here on Eight Blood Road? Okay. Board, I would entertain a motion, unless you want to say something in summary. I think we've heard everything.
I think it would be sort of spending voice time unnecessarily.
I'd like to hear a motion from anyone to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second to the motion.
I got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it is seven forty-five, but I am going to go about five or ten more minutes on this to see if we can wrap it up. So does anybody want to make a comment about their thoughts? Do you think that the petitioner has satisfied the variance? Bill, go.
You know, and first of all, I'm very pleased with the latest, the package we got with the default narrative, acknowledging it is a, because it's creating a new non-conformity, you know, requesting a variance. With the plan, the Land Tech Consultant Plot Plan is very clear, the narrative is very clear. I agree, it is a variance and not a special permit. And I think in the narrative and everything else that's been provided, all the points under Chapter 48 in our local bylaw have been covered. I acknowledge and see the points that have been made on what's unique about the site for the lot shape, soil condition with the septic system, and know the hardship that is being created. So, no, I think it's well-presented.
Cheryl.
I agree it's well-presented, but I have heartburn over this one. I love granting this kind of variance. I, you know, giving people a porch, a garage, you know, when they're in tough situations is why I'm on this board. But the shape of the land and the hill in the back, and I just, I can't wrap my mind around the fact that there's no way to build this without, and maintain it, without encroaching on other people's property. It's not a single-story addition either. It's a two-story addition with living space above. It's going to need ladders that are going to need to be able to be angled. It's going, we've turned down additions closer to property lines due to inability to get ladders and whatever up there. I just have heartburn about this one. I, I can't, I worry about it. I think it's a little too close. I hear what he's saying about the bio-clear area and wanting to maintain his turnaround. I keep thinking, so his turnaround becomes where the, where the proposed garage is, and he puts his garage out front there where the turnaround is. I understand that doesn't give him the finished space above for his family room, and I think he should be able to have a family room, but I have heartburn about this one.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment? How about the alternates you've heard? Do you want to make some comment?
Four feet, especially for a two-story house. I mean, I don't see how you can put a ladder up or get up that side. Even staging wouldn't fit in there. I mean, next-door neighbor obviously doesn't seem to mind, but you don't know who's going to move there in the future. And we've seen other cases in town where people put iron rods in the lot line to make sure people don't go one inch over it. So, you know, whether or not that's likely to occur is not great, but still, you know, we're setting ourselves up for some future issues.
Comment from anyone else?
I, oh, go ahead, Bill. Well, I, I appreciate the presentation also. However, I don't know if the argument's been made about the standard that we should have for a variance. It's astonishing to me that to go visit the site, you feel like you're in the middle of, you know, nowhere main, you know, it's just, and we're talking about a structure that's four feet from a property line, which we would not approve even in the lake area, where they have six thousand square foot lots. That's my concern. I don't know how we could deny anyone else coming into this board for that kind of setback. It establishes precedent that, I'm just concerned about it, too. I agree with you, Cheryl. It gives me heartburn also.
John, you want to speak to it?
Well, I agree with what I've heard. I think being the two stories really concerns me. I might be inclined to favor the, if it was a one-story garage and only a garage and not a living space over it. If somebody does come along and build a house next door at some time, and you're four feet from the property line with a two-story structure, that's awfully high up against a fence or whatever. So I'm not, I'm not real enthused about what I'm seeing.
Anyone else, Alan?
No, I'm uncomfortable with it, too. But it is an odd situation. I have been down to Blood Road, and I've seen this area. And, you know, it's just like, just like I was saying to Cheryl earlier, like John, like Jeff said, it's like you're in the middle of nowhere. It's a different country down there. And the property over here, it's, even with that property, it's almost like it's not there, the condition that I've seen it in when I saw it. I don't know, I haven't seen it recently, but it's kind of a tough one, particularly if the neighbor is saying, "I'm okay with it." I'd be, I'd almost be more comfortable with the neighbor, with there being something that the neighbor did to sort of official, make it official, that it's okay to use this as some kind of an easement or something. But I'm just concerned, any one of us who have property in town would be concerned about somebody putting something four feet next to their property line. So it's, I'm uncomfortable with it as well. Doesn't mean I wouldn't vote if I had voting authority at this meeting, but I'm uncomfortable.
I'm not saying I wouldn't vote for it, but I'm just not happy.
Patrick?
I'm worried.
Nothing to say?
I have none.
I have a couple of comments. Do you want to go first?
I just wanted to comment. Again, it was said before, and I understand the concerns of everybody. I have the same concerns about trespassing on adjoining property. No, it's outside of the hands of this board. There are mechanisms for it. It's under the, the building permits, under the state building code. There are requirements in there. The building inspector is the enforcer of that. If there are any problems, it can go to the building inspector, or trespassing goes to the local policing authorities. I know, I've been down this route several times before, and I know how it's handled. So, yeah, there are safeguards in there. And, you know, if you get your neighbor's permission, good. And construction-wise, you know, it is possible to build it without trespassing. It's not very easy, but it could be done. If, on another note, if we are, no, we've already accepted or heard all the testimony in the presentation, meaning the different aspects of zoning requirements for granting a variance. If we were to deny the variance, we need to have specific reasons as to, you know, other than, don't like the looks, but in the water browser, too close to the property line, we need to get more into specifics on the different criteria and how they are not met.
I think we can deny it simply because it's too close to the property line.
You can't deny it just on that fact.
Bill, there's no, nothing in the code that specifies that you have to have a garage, or you have to have a, or you have to have an addition, or you have to have, or the garage can't be detached, or that you encroach on your turnaround, or, you know, there's just so many reasons why.
You know, the-
But in this case, the reasons for the variance, I think, there could be an opposing counsel who could, you know, rebut every assertion there is for a variance. The only thing that sways me is the fact that the abutter is familiar with what's going on. I, because I'm with you, Alan, if there was someone who lived right here, they would be at this meeting, and we would definitely not grant this variance if there was a neighbor who, if there was an abutter in opposition. There's no doubt about it.
So let me say a couple of things that, that's on my mind, and they're in no particular order. The first is that this house was purchased recently. So the purchaser of the house knew going in there that he had a three thousand square foot structure with no basement and no garage, and that they're zoning in every community and every town in Massachusetts. And so relative to what you've all said about, does he reach the threshold criteria for hardship? That one has me just a little bit perplexed because it's not as if he created his own hardship, but he went in eyes wide open, that this property has some limitations on having the desired garage addition. The second thing I want to say is, for the record, I think garages in New England are very, very important, but I don't think they're necessities. And we have often said on this board to someone who wants a garage, it's not about wants, it's about needs. And this applicant has demonstrated, to me at least, a need for the garage because he's on the waterfront, he needs to pull the boat out. I'm looking at a shed that's violating the property setbacks right now, and might suggest that if we're inclined to give him the garage, he has to get rid of that shed so he doesn't have a setback violation on two sides. But he doesn't have a basement, he has no place for his outdoor furniture, and we have agreed on this board time and time again, the properties near the lake and that have lake access like this really do need a storage place for all of the things, the toys, the lawn mowers, the boats, the skis, the jet skis, whatever they have. And it is far preferable to have them off the front lawn or the back lawn, and to have them undercover where they're protected and the neighbors don't have to share the view. I'm also concerned about the proximity to the sideline, but as Bill stated, that is a neighbor-to-neighbor, and Mark, as you even pointed out, it's a neighbor-to-neighbor problem. If he offends his, if he trespasses on the neighbor's property, the neighbor has a remedy against that. He can put up a fence and keep him from building it if that's his pleasure. I'm inclined to accept the representation of this gentleman, that he spoke to his neighbor and his neighbor's okay with it. I imagine that Matheson will give him either a verbal or a written temporary easement to go on the property to construct it because he's represented, that's what he would do. So I'm not worried about the, and as you said, you could construct it in a four-feet space if you absolutely had to. So I'm not so worried about that. And I am completely motivated to be inclined to grant this particular variance, as much as I also don't like the proximity to the side yard for a number of reasons. This lot is covered with no other way, no other place to go. He really does have flood problems, flood zone problems. He's going to have a pushback from the Conservation Commission anywhere in the hundred-foot wetlands line. Even this garage is probably going to give him a problem. He cannot go on that bio-clear system on top of it. He cannot put the garage in front of the house without another variance from this board on another set of the bylaws, and that's not what he's here for. That's, you're right, that's one place he could put it, but he won't get any additional living space out of it, and it will completely conceal his, the front of his house. If I told you you couldn't have a garage and you had to put, the only way to have a garage is put it in the front of your house, I'm not sure I would even vote for that because I did vote for it on our street on a shed, and I've regretted ever since. It looks terrible, the shed in the front yard, it looks terrible. Anyway, having said all those things, I see hardship. I don't see the garage as being so large that it's a want garage. It seems to be a need garage. We did ask him to bring it down from eighteen feet, which I think was one and a half cars to the bare minimum, and he's accomplished that. I sort of was hoping that maybe you could, I don't know, maybe bump it in a foot in the back, but I'm not sure five feet's going to make me any happier than the four feet. So those are my feelings. Anybody else? Patrick?
Would you be receptive to buying a sliver of the land next door from this gentleman?
Patrick, I don't, I don't, first of all, we can't force that on this board, but I know Mr. Matheson's history, and he's not a seller of land, to my knowledge. He doesn't break his parcel up.
We're just trying to-
Yeah. Yeah. I would, I would guess that Mr. Royal's already explored options like that with his neighbor. The hearing is closed.
I think it's preferable to have a garage in front of your house than to have it that close, and have it within the setbacks than to have it that close to the property line. I understand it doesn't give him his family room above, and I, and I'm torn because in my profession, I think that houses are more valuable and better if they have family rooms and-
So let me ask the applicant, I know the hearing is closed, but I've done this before in the past. We apparently have mixed opinions on the board. We have in the past polled the board before taking a vote and given you the option of, we can reopen and continue if you want, to see if there's any newer additional evidence or pushback you want to make on this application, or do you want us to put it to a vote? But I will poll the board first, and then I'll give you the option of whether you think you want to go forward. And I will tell you after, I should have said it ahead of time, the five voting members are this side up to myself and Cheryl. These are the alternates, okay? So Jeff, we have, we're just polling, your inclination on this one?
I would reject it were it not for the neighbor's acquiescence to it, but I'm not going to support it. I'll abstain.
John?
I mean, I, but your comments were very helpful, Cheryl, on the hardship. I can see the garage part of this. I'm not opposed to the garage. I'm concerned about the two-story height and the family room over it, so I'm, I'm not sure. That's where I'm at.
Bill?
In favor of granting?
Cheryl.
I think I'm with Jeff on this. I desperately want to say yes, but feel like I need to say no. So I would abstain because I just, I think it's too close. I think it's invasive, even if there's no one currently living there. Someday, someone will be, and it's just, there's just no way-
And it's just, there's just no way to maintain a two-story addition. And I think that you can get a garage up front, you may lose your turnaround, you may have to use your, what you'd like to use as your garage as a turnaround. But I just, I don't want to say no, but I don't want to say yes.
Do you want to take a chance and put it to a vote? I'm going to, I'm going to actually take my next hearing, let you speak in the hall, come back.
Can I make a point?
Yep.
If there is a motion to grant, you need four favorable votes for it to pass. If there are two people who are abstaining, you will not get four favorable votes.
Okay, your point is made.
With a board.
Okay. I'm going to step you back. We won't take a vote right now. I'm going to step you back to think about it and discuss it. Okay, I'm sorry for the delay. For the next hearing, I'm calling the 7:45 hearing, case number 841A, the hearing of 94 Goldsmith Street, Arlene Martino, for a special permit from Section 17358 for a proposed accessory dwelling. And introduce yourself and present your case, and we're pretty informed.
My name's Arlene Martino, 94 Goldsmith Street. I live in a 1,200-square-foot house with an attached two-car garage. What I want to do is build, raise the roof on the garage, build a studio in-law apartment there with access to it from the outside. I had a septic tank recently pumped, and I got a note from the company saying that everything appeared to be in order from their perspective. You know, the septic system is large enough to cover the addition, and I'm going to do it tastefully, so that it will not detract from the loveliness of the 1929 house that I live in, and that's about it.
Who will be occupying?
It will be my son.
And how old is his son?
He's 34.
And see that you've reviewed the zoning bylaws, so you know that the accessory dwelling requires that it be renewed every three years, requires that you can no longer use it on, if there's a change of ownership, they would have to come back here, and if there's no functional dependency of the person occupying it, it can't be occupied. So, as long as your son is there, it's fine.
You can't use it as a rental property.
Oh, okay, that's.
Or anyone else related, yeah, related to you. Anyone else?
Could it be used by anyone else related to me?
No, I, no, I said, your son or any, I meant to say, your son or anyone related to you can occupy it, or anyone functionally dependent can occupy it, but it can't be used.
A functionally dependent person that's not a relative could occupy it?
Yes, or if you become the dependent person, and you bring in like a caregiver to take care of you.
Yeah.
It can be occupied by that relationship.
Right. I mean, could it be someone I know who's not my blood relative, who's functionally dependent, could occupy it?
Yes, if you were caring for that person.
Okay, I see.
Or it could be a caretaker.
Yeah, I understand, yes.
Okay. Now, does the board have any questions? John?
Yeah, I mean, looking at the regulations and anything else, there's certain criteria. We don't have any information on several of the points that's a criteria. I know you submitted a statement saying that Ratter has, septic system has looked at the property and says the septic system is functional.
Well, I can show you, I don't know exactly what he said, but I can give you the letter that I got.
Well, it says in here, the Board of Health was to document the special permit granting authority, that the sewage disposal will be satisfactorily provided for, no, which means that the system is large enough for the number of people going to be there.
It is. It's for a four-bedroom house, and it's only a three-bedroom house.
All right. And do we have that from Ratter or from Board of Health?
No, from the gentleman in the building of the apartment, who, I think he was an engineer that I spoke with, Jim Greffey, yes.
Septic systems weren't our purview. I thought that was.
No, 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 no. It says in here that they must document to us that, you know, that it is adequate-sized system for the, to family of the accessory dwelling.
Well, you intend to put an addition on, so they'd have to pull the building permit, which would automatically mean a Board of Health review.
They're not just adding a kitchen.
I'm just pointing out, it's that, no, we're supposed to be going by the bylaw. And also, too, that, no, we're supposed to be, should have received a site plan or something showing where the house is located on the property, and showing that there is adequate parking for the number of vehicles.
So, let me do this for any abutters to this property that are in the room. Under our zoning boiler in Littleton, accessory dwellings are allowed by special permit on conditions as follows. Either unit, either the main unit or the accessory unit, shall be occupied by one or more persons related by blood, marriage, or functionally dependent for medical or other reasons on the occupant of the other unit. The Board of Health needs to document to our satisfaction, to this permit-granting authority's satisfaction, that sewage disposal will be satisfactorily provided for. Usually with accessory dwellings, the septic system, always with accessory dwellings, the septic system is reviewed by Jim Greffey and then shown by Board of Health. If there's any question about numbers of bedrooms for the sized septic system, that's taken care of at that level. The applicant has represented to us that Jim Greffey has said it's a four-bedroom sized system, and this will be a three-bedroom dwelling. Parking requirements, two parking spaces are required for the primary, and two additional for the accessory. The applicant has submitted a narrative stating that she has a circular driveway, two-car-wide driveway that leads to the garage, and a circle in front of the house, and an additional drive on the opposite side of the property, which leads down to the back of my nearly two-acre lot, two-acre lot. And then, we have to remind her that the certificate of occupancy for the accessory dwelling is for a period of three years. Now, having said that, I'm going to ask the board if there are any other comments to this. If not, I'm going to read the building inspector's comment. Applicant is seeking a special permit to allow an in-law apartment pursuant to 17358 of the Littleton zoning bylaws, no further comment. And we had one letter that was submitted by an abutter. It says, "We are abutters, and would like to know who and the number of persons that will be occupying the proposed accessory dwelling. Additionally, what is the anticipated size of the addition? And will it be attached to an existing structure? Is the addition to be used as rental unit only, and not to be used in a commercial enterprise, retail wholesale, et cetera?" And the answer to those questions were in the narrative, but I will repeat them. The applicant has requested that one person occupies the proposed accessory dwelling. The anticipated size of the addition is going to be a studio apartment above the existing garage. There's going to be no new construction, so there's nothing going to be added or attached to the existing structure.
Second story.
Second story. I'm sorry. The new construction is over. I apologize. It's the room over the garage, but nothing is going, the footprint isn't going to enlarge on the ground. And the statement, is it to be used as a rental only? It cannot be a rental unit to anyone who doesn't satisfy the criteria, blood, marriage, or functionally dependent. Oh, also, it can't be a commercial addition, because it's in a residential zone. So, are there any, are there any abutters that want to speak to this petition? Any neighbors? Okay, is everybody satisfied? I'll entertain a motion to close this hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to quickly vote it?
Sure. I went and looked at this property. I don't see how it could possibly adversely affect anyone, anywhere. I couldn't see the back, I couldn't find the back from driving around the roads. I drove up the driveway, peered around the building, I trespassed all over your property. And I don't see anything detrimental about this addition at all to any neighbor or town.
Anyone else? Would you like to make a motion?
I, oh gosh, where's the?
Right here.
Okay. I make a motion that we grant the special permit to allow an accessory dwelling pursuant to 170, Section 173-58 of Littleton's bylaws at 94 Goldman Street.
Second to that motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? No. Unanimous. You have your permit.
There is an appeal period.
There is an appeal period, but you are able to take your, get your building permit before the expiration of the appeals period.
And then I should come back in three years to your.
Yes.
Let's do the building inspector, not to us.
Oh, I see. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call, no, not because I lost my, the Four Dogwood Road. So, this is case number, the time is 8:15, and I'm calling the case number 842A, Four Dogwood Road. Petition of John and Tessa Kaminsky for a special permit or a variance from Section 17310B1 for a proposed addition at Four Dogwood Road. State your case. Sean?
Hi, Sean Keener. Good to see you guys again. I represent John and Tessa Kaminsky. They're in the back row with us tonight. They've been citizens of Littleton for over eight years, and they'd like to increase the size of their house now that they have two children with us. So, they want a second floor on. The problem is, the front of the house, on the right front corner, is only 29.4 feet from the street. It's required to be 30 feet. So, we want to put a second floor on and go up. So, we have an existing nonconforming lot that we're going to add a second floor on. It's not really increasing the nonconformity, but I have to continue. I'm a terrible public speaker, if you haven't figured that out yet.
Now, I see you have at least one abutter in the room. Have you seen the plan? Do you want us to pull?
No, I understand that it's just less than a foot from, from the regulation, correct? Yeah.
Okay. Any, anybody on the board have any questions of this application, of this application?
I just have one question about if it's a variance or a special permit. If this special permit is variance, there's no.
There's an existing nonconformity.
Yeah.
So, that's, no?
No. We're doing these as variances right now.
No, no, no. This is a special permit.
No, it's an existing nonconformity.
No, okay, let me clarify.
A new nonconformity.
Let me clarify.
It's a special permit.
Let me clarify. The existing lot is nonconforming, because 8,000 square feet, rather than the required 40,000 square feet. Front setback is less than 30 feet, required to be 30 feet. Those are the only nonconformities of the particular property. That makes the house nonconforming. That which is being proposed is to add a second story, which does not create a new nonconformity. Therefore, it is a special permit. If they were to create a new nonconformity, then that would be a variance.
So, the master's request for a special permit, so the 21-day waiting period doesn't apply with the special permit?
Yeah, it does still.
It does still apply.
Yeah, because with a special permit, that, once a decision is filed, there's a 20-day appeal period. But you can still enact the, if we were to grant, you can enact the decision by obtaining a building permit, but it is still under the umbrella that if somebody were to appeal and put a hold to it, it goes to the hall, but.
It's your risk.
I understand. I just wanted to be clear when I.
How comfortable are you with your neighbors?
The building instructor can give it early. In the past, he used to wait the 20 days. But he says on his narrative that the roof overhang is going to make it more. Does that count?
No, because the, okay, because right now, the house is 29.4 feet, which is still less than 30. He's just increasing that to 28.6. That's not creating a new nonconformity. On the side of the building, the right side, the building currently is 16.2. The roof overhang will be 15.4. That does not create a new nonconformity. On the other side, it's still right under 15 feet on the rear. Therefore, there are no new nonconformities even with the roof overhang. As indicated on the plan that was submitted by R. Wilson &amp; Associates.
If you count the roof overhang, the new roof overhang to 28.6.
The existing building is 29.4.
Yeah, so I would call that a new nonconformity.
No, 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 no.
It's de minimis.
No, no.
It's intensified the nonconformity, but it is not creating.
It is confusing. There's a hip roof on there right now, so there's overhang on all four sides. But I think you'll see that I'm keeping the walls straight over the other walls, obviously for structural reasons. And then I'm just putting a 12-inch overhang back on. So, I actually think that that might be a misprint on.
Well, the 28.6 refers to the overhang, the 29.4 refers to the wall. I'm not changing that. So.
The wall's staying the same.
Yeah.
There's a, the existing setback now, that measurement here, Cheryl, is going to the wall. There's a roof already overhang.
All right. No abutters want to speak in opposition or in favor of this? Yes? You got ID yourself. Wait.
Stephen Foss, Seven Cedar Road, abutter to the Kaminskis. I don't know if I pronounced it right. I'm totally in favor. I think they should have the opportunity to grow with the neighborhood as their families.
That was a nice statement. Thank you.
I'm also an abutter at Two Dogwood Road. I'm Jen Klein. And I am in favor of this addition.
Make motion to close the hearing?
Who wants to second?
I want.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hearing is closed. Discussion?
The second-story addition's very much in keeping with the neighborhood. And it's got good setbacks, even though they don't quite conform. I have no problem with this addition at all.
I agree. I move we grant a special permit for a second-story addition to Four Dogwood Road as described in the drawings prepared by Giatino Design dated 7/114. Is that it?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your new home. Okay, before I reopen this hearing, I'm going back now to the 7:30 continued hearing of Eight Blood Road, I want to make another sort of appeal to my board.
Are we reopening the hearing first?
No, I didn't reopen the hearing. We're still in deliberation. I didn't reopen it yet.
Oh, I mean, we're still going back to the.
Sorry, I just returned to the hearing of Eight Blood Road, but to the deliberation section. I didn't reopen the hearing yet. I want to make an appeal to the board, and that appeal is this. I think it's unfair to an applicant for abstentions to stand in the way of a definitive decision. And I don't think you're doing your jobs to abstain. I think that the two of you who want to abstain are not truly against this enough to vote no, or if you are, put it on the line, but let the applicant leave here with a decision that gives him some direction. And I'm going to call you one more time.
My, I, I'm still not in favor of this, and my, my main concern is a precedent. It's, this is something.
We don't set precedent on this board. We do not set precedent on this board. And we say it over and over again, there is no precedent set. Every single case has an individual aspect, because the next one might not have an agreeable neighbor, or the next one might not have a second story, or the next one might not need a boat. So, there's no precedent on this board, okay? But I understand what you're saying.
Two-story addition, four feet from a property line.
You can be against it. I'm just asking you not to abstain, so that the applicant has a direction.
I also have to explain that I am an architect. I don't buy any of these arguments about this is the only way this could be built. I'm given these problems, or people like me are given these problems all the time. And I understand that the, what you came up with is simple and reasonable and works well, but people deal with limitations all the time relating to the existing conditions of their property. And so, this is clouding, this is making it more difficult for me to go. And so this is clouding, this is making it more difficult for me to go along with this.
My problem is that it is just so very close to the property line. We've turned down many people that are further away from the property line for things like this. And it's not like you inherited the property, or your family has changed, you just bought it. You bought it without a garage. And I think like Jeff, if you need a store, more storage, and need more, need another garage, you might need to lose your turnaround. You might need to find, be more... I hate saying no to people. I really, really hate saying no to people.
Okay. Thank you both.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if, how to throw this out there, but I'm wondering if the other board members would be opposed if it was just a garage and not a two-story structure.
So let's reopen the hearing. Let the applicant who I sent out in the hall to discuss this input some of their comments after being in the hall and hearing our comments. And let's see if there's any way to find a way to give them some relief that's not objectionable to the board members as this one is. How's that? So I'll entertain a motion to reopen the hearing.
I can make a motion to reopen the hearing?
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of reopening the hearing for additional information and input?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We're discussing outside the possibility of continuing, as was suggested as a possibility. So we could talk to the abutter and see what changes could be made, particularly by easement, talking about, at this point, the actual owners are elderly and are, and the son is the person who lives two doors down, or two properties down. And we discussed the possibility of approaching them and have him come in, because he's been in Yorkville, didn't he?
He offered to come in and speak.
To see what we could do about easing the board's concern about this closeness to the property line. And it's two acres, and if there's a 40,000-foot requirement for those two acres, that's only talking about two lots. And in that area, there is a possibility, you know, the house may be up close to the line, but there doesn't necessarily have to be a house right there, such as there is in other areas of the slag. But I think we can, with the abutters' help, I think we can assarge the board's concerns about the proximity to the line and what would happen if other houses were going in that area. Because that can be prevented from the houses being too close in that area with that much land forming a map. The other ones, the one on the other spot, the other house is not really, the other side is impossible to be there anyway. So we're only talking about that, I guess it's the north-easterly side of the house. If that's the abutter there, that property there, the two-acre property, that's what we have to deal with, and I think we may be able to do that by the time the next hearing rolls around.
Would I, given that Mr. Joyce's suggestion was that you see if it's possible to buy a sliver, would you please explore that or a bowtie swap so you get some more distance on the side? Because even if Mr. Matheson comes in and says that it's okay with him, I'm still hearing little opposition on there being a two-story structure that close to any lot line. So just bear that in mind.
I was, if there's some pushback on actually conveying the property, we had also discussed the possibility of an easement, you know, for construction, maintenance of it, which would preclude another house going in there within 15 feet, which would effectively, I believe, do what the board wants it to do so it wouldn't be, you know, a house looking at a house and prevent that problem. So I think an easement may be able to do the same thing. It might be easier to acquire.
I, for one, appreciate your willingness to keep working on this.
I do, too.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll give you another continuance, and I'm sorry for stretching it out, but you understand the concerns of the board.
All right, so we're gonna do it November 20th?
I think I'm away. Let me just... Can we move that to the meeting?
The hearing's on 27th Thanksgiving.
I can't remember when I'm away.
Nothing came in for November, so can you go...
What if we went November 6th and we're not bumping up against the...
Could they, could they do anything in that time?
Yeah, around the 6th.
How about just doing the 13th?
I don't, I think I'm away.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hearing what was just said here about a variance, is this something that we could make a decision on tonight based on him getting a variance of five feet or 10 feet to please the board?
Mr. and I don't think so, John. I think it's, I still think we're gonna have some deliberation on it, but that was a good suggestion.
Can't you just wait until December?
He's probably not gonna construct it first, but let me just see. I'm away one of these Thursdays, and whichever one I'm not, we'll schedule.
But the thing is, if they are willing to wait until December, because it may take more than a month to go under the spell, then we may have cases, we need to do it on a normal meeting in December.
When is our normal meeting in December?
Does that work for you?
Okay.
When is our normal meeting in December? Is that the 18th?
Christmas Day.
Is that the 18th? Are we gonna hold it on the 18th, or are we gonna move it up a week?
I'll find that out before we adjourn.
Why do we want to move it up a week?
Because I might not be here, that's why.
Oh, in December?
December 18th is...
No, Sherri, we're talking about going into December.
Not remembering, meeting in November at all.
Not meeting in November. Why don't we move December up to the 11th? Because 18th is Hanukkah, and the 25th is Christmas, and it pushes us up against school vacation and college breaks for people, so maybe...
That happens in here.
No, college breaks are early.
No, college breaks and school vacations start before that week.
So let's move it to 11th and be done with it.
I won't be around the 11th.
You're not gonna be around the 11th.
No.
I don't know where I'm gonna be that week for my anniversary wedding.
Say?
18th, 14th.
18th is tough.
Well, do you want to do a special meeting sometime in November, like in two weeks or something?
It doesn't give them time to do what they need to do.
I know.
What they are suggesting, that's why, you know, December...
Are you planning to try to construct this winter? I mean, is this something that you need as soon as possible?
There's conservation commission concerns here.
Right.
And that's what most of the engineering issues will be.
Trying to get ready for the spring.
Right. But, I mean, we could actually be doing that together with this, but, you know, we wanted to...
Yes.
This was the first step. That's the conservation...
So you're not spending any more money.
Right.
All right, so we're gonna skip the November meeting.
Can we move the other one to, December 11th didn't work?
No, John won't be here. So our normal meeting is the 18th.
How about December 3rd, the 4th? Does anyone have a problem with December 4th? It's halfway between the two normal meetings.
Well, the only issue is people coming in, you know, who, it would preclude people who want to hit the 18th meeting because they wouldn't make it. I know, I know.
It's December.
Yeah.
If anyone comes in, we can hold a special meeting.
You know, there's one more week before, you know, somebody really wanted to get on for November, they could go to the little sun, so...
There's nothing yet.
Well, there might be...
Not if we go with December 4th.
If we need to hold a special meeting.
As this continuation, and if we need to hold the December 18th meeting, we just will. Hopefully, we can discourage anybody from coming in for December. Yeah. Better work with you December 4th.
So if anyone comes in for November, you can...
Madam Chair?
...move it to November 4th.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion that we continue the hearing for 8 Blood Road to December 4, 2014, at 7:30 PM.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your...
Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
All right, I got two decisions that need to be written. Accessory dwellings are easy to...
I don't know, I'll take the 94...